Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us clear direction on how to show our appreciation by loving and serving our neighbors, Lord. On this coming Thanksgiving Day, may we be especially thankful for each other, for our family and our friends, who enrich our lives in many ways. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Yes, Mayor Counsel, good afternoon. I'd like to introduce Mr. Luis Garcia, who is here with us today to accept this proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas November has been designated as Self-Defense Awareness Month with the purpose of educating citizens, especially women and teens, about realistic self-defense options that could very well save their lives. Whereas self-defense is the best way of protecting ourselves through personal self-defense education and training, we can be empowered with the right knowledge and the correct tools to stop a potentially life-altering event and prevent an offensive criminal act from negatively impacting our lives. Whereas self-defense is not always about fighting back, it is about applying quick thinking and de-escalating methods to the situation in order to get away, much like what Mr. Miyagi said in one of the Karate Kid movies, that the best way to avoid a punch is not to be there, and avoidance is much easier than recovery." Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of November 2017 as Self-Defense Awareness Month, proclaimed on this the 13th day of November 2017.
I need a motion to approve.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Hi, aloha. Good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity of Mission to be here, and I feel really honored. When every woman experiences domestic violence in her life, estimate 1.3 million women, they're victims of physical assault by her partner, his chair. But sometimes these cases, they never report to the police. Women's violence between partnership at the strongest risk affector transmitting violent behavior from generation to next generation. We need to break this, or we need to stop this circle. When I was a child, when I was a child, I heard ambulance man says to my mom, "Miss Garcia, you must have done something to provoke him." And the other pedophile says, "It takes two people to make an argument." And I think myself, this is wrong. She never have do anything to provoke my dad to do that. And my thought, violence is never, never a choice. I will stand up for domestic violence. I believe our community will be safer. Today, one woman at a time, defend a woman, she will be safe for today. But we teach a woman self-defense, or we teach her how to defend herself, she will be safe for lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Good afternoon, City Council. I want to thank all of you who came out for the Butterfly Festival, and report that attendance for paid registrants closed out at 76 people this year, which is less than 50 percent of the attendance we had last year. Some good news, I hope, is that we had one representative from Singapore, a member of a group called Butterflies Without Borders, that has 7,000 members, and he was absolutely blown away by Mission, Texas, and says that we do rival that part of Asia, which includes, you know, Thailand and those places in terms of our beautiful butterflies, volume and variety. And he will be carrying that message back, and hopefully, many more people from Singapore will be traveling to Mission, Texas for the festival. We had a reporter here from the San Antonio Express News covering the festival and other events, as well as a reporter from Audubon, which is the global birding organization. They are writing an article on the festival in Mission, and of course, the border wall issues for their 2.75 million readers. So we will look for that to be published soon, and that is not publicity that you can buy. They are an advertiser-free magazine. So thank you for your support. We certainly hope that next year, the festival will bounce back, and I will continue to do everything in my power in terms of marketing and publicity for this event to make that happen. Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have our Chamber of Commerce report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'll begin with recent events. On October 25th, 2017, we continued our Thinking Outside the Box Workshop Series, with the topic being payroll compliance. The workshop was held at the Seed Building, and we had 11 members attend the workshop. Next, on October 26th, we held our first Pizza with the President, which is our new and potential member orientation. The event was held at the Mission Chamber of Commerce, and we had 26 people attend, which was a combination of new and potential members. On the very same day, we also had a ribbon cutting for Whistling Duck. We had approximately 50 people in attendance for the ribbon cutting, which also was Whistling Duck's grand opening. Next, on October 27th, we had a ribbon cutting for Brick Fire Pizza and More. In attendance, we approximately had 30 people for this ribbon cutting. On November 3rd, we relaunched our Coffee Connection Series, which was held at the new Jitters location inside the Seed Building. We had approximately 20 people in attendance for this event. Following that, this past Thursday, on November 9th, we held a ribbon cutting for The Ground Guys, which is a landscape management company. The event was held at Rancho La Gloria, here in Mission, and we had 35 people in attendance for this ribbon cutting. In terms of upcoming events, on November 15th, from 9:00 to 11:00, we're having a Business Workshop Series titled Building Your Online Presence, which will take place at the Chamber of Commerce. Following that, this Thursday, which is November 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will have our bimonthly Business Mixer. This event will be honoring HEB and Bird Ogden for their Hurricane Harvey relief contributions. And then lastly, on December 7th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., we're hosting a member holiday Christmas social at Waterford Gardens Assisted Living, located here in Mission, Texas. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Department reports, they're in your packet. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask now.
May I move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the reports? As presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? State your name and address, please.
Hello, hi. My name is Antonio Galván. It's my first time here. The reason that I'm here is because I want to make you aware of an injustice that was done to myself and my little boy, Gael Galván. What happened was, in August, I decided to open up a basketball camp. So I went over to the Boys and Girls Club Director, Juan Arévalo, I think is his last name, and I asked him for the pricing, so that I could rent out the Banworth Park Gym. So we agreed on a price, I started renting it, and the reason that I found out that I could rent it was from the volleyball coach, who had been conducting his volleyball camp for about five years. So he did inform me, but after a while, he was going to have to adjust my time. So the first month, I had the gym from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m., and then he came back and he changed it from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And then, with no prior notice, all of a sudden, he told me that I was not going to be able to use the gym because of the voting for the county. At that point, I informed him that, you know, the Boys and Girls Club Gym is for little boys and girls in the community, for the physical education of the kids in the community. And why is he taking that away from the children? He told me that it's out of his hands. So I talked to the city manager, I called him, I asked him the same question, I requested for, I was trying to brainstorm with him to see if we can solve this situation, and see if they could move the voting somewhere else, so that we wouldn't have to lose out the gym. And at that point, he informed me that he's not sure if I can conduct business out of the basketball gym. And I said, "What do you mean? You know, you've had a volleyball camp here for five years. The guys have been doing this volleyball camp for the past five years here. I live right next to the park, so I know all this, because I see it every single day." So what happened was, they banned me from the gym. They took me away from the gym because of the voting, so I had to look for another gym elsewhere. And a week to inspire, and I lost about 10 customers, 10 of my clients left, because I didn't have a gym. And then I found out that the volleyball coach was offered to use a gym over at Mayberry, the Mayberry Gym, and I wasn't offered the same deal, I wasn't even given the same opportunity. What Juan told me is that I can no longer use the gym for business, however, he allowed the volleyball coach to continue his business at the other gym. And I just think that's an injustice, and I want to make you aware of this, I want to make you aware of what you guys are doing to the children of the community, taking away their facilities for physical education. I'm conducting a service for the city, helping the children. I don't charge too much, my fee is minimal, so that I can allow people from all over the valley to attend. I had a student from Long Island, I had several students from Mission CSD, I had other students from Shenandoah ISD, I have students from McAllen ISD. So it's open to the public, it's open to whoever wants to. So as far as I'm concerned, right now, I'm not allowed to use the gym at all, but the volleyball coach is, and that's injustice that I don't think is fair.
Where can you use a gym?
They told me that I can no longer conduct business out of that gym. However, the volleyball coach is still conducting his business at the Mayberry Gym, when the voting was taking place, and I believe he's back over at the Banworth Park Gym now, that the voting is over.
How many kids do you have?
I started with 14 kids, and went down with four kids. I was special enough to convince a 956 owner to allow me to rent out his gym, because he had his own basketball camp offering there, and mine was really inexpensive compared to his pricing. But I was able to work out a deal, and right now, I'm back up to nine athletes, and I'm recruiting more people, so I should have about 20 to 30 athletes in about two to three weeks. But I would like to be able to continue using the Banworth Park Gym, so that I can, because it's closer to the community, the parents are able to exercise and work out as their children are conducting their camp. And on that right now, there's some facilities for the parents to do any physical activity at all.
You take care of the kids and the parents come around?
Yes.
And they tell you you cannot use the Banworth Park?
Excuse me?
You cannot use the Banworth Park?
That's what Juan Arévalo told me, the director of the Boys and Girls Club. He told me that I was banned from conducting business, that I was not going to be able to use it to conduct business anymore. But I found out through other means, by investigative work on myself, that the volleyball coach was able to go over to the Mayberry Gym and continue his business there, and he didn't miss any days at all, he was continuous. And now he's back over at the Banworth Park, and he has a big old sign from the gym there at the Banworth Park. So I was extremely surprised when the city manager told me that he was unaware that there was any business being conducted out of the gym there.
Well, I wasn't aware either, so, who is the volleyball coach?
I don't have his name, but I have his telephone number.
Does anybody know who is the volleyball coach? Is he the, he's the Boys and Girls Club?
Mr. Arévalo is the Boys and Girls Club Director, Mayor. He's got the...
Yes. Well, the reason why we're allowing them to coach is because they're volunteer coaches. They volunteer their time to the Boys and Girls Club, so we have all these gyms that we have them there at Mayberry, and we also have them at the main unit. So Mr. Galván was actually charging kids to use, you know, pretty much taxpayers' money. So what we did is, we allowed the coaches to come to the club as volunteers, they go through the application with Human Resource, and then those coaches are placed in our leagues, and then they can volunteer. So we give them a gym back to them. So pretty much, right now at Mayberry, we actually went back, because election was over last Tuesday.
Right.
So election is over, so our teams, we have around 60 teams, some in volleyball and so forth, so we got to spread out our gyms. We have four gyms, so that's the reason why, but they're all volunteer coaches, and that's the reason, because our duty is, once a parent register a kid, they'll put him in a team, and we got to give this team a place to practice, which is one hour, so.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I've got a cell phone number, you can call right now and ask him, and he'll give you the pricing. He'll tell you how much he charges, he's been doing this for five years.
What's your number? Do you have a number?
Yeah, I've got it right here. And another thing is that, another thing that I found out, is that his daughter, who's in that volleyball thing, so, you know, it's...
Looks a little worse.
You know, it's conflict of interest. You know, he covered his daughter, but my son over here is on the end of it, you know?
Mayor, if I may, one of the things that's happening is, we have individuals who might be interested in renting out a facility, a city facility, like a gym, or, you know, tennis courts, or whatever the case may be. As a matter of fact, we had the same situation with the tennis courts, and we finally finalized something for the people who are out there doing private lessons. So this is more or less the same thing. We have individuals who are interested in doing private lessons, whether it's basketball, volleyball, or whatever the case may be, wanting to use city facilities to conduct the business. And so when I found out about this call, that's when I spoke to Mr. Arévalo, and I said, "You know what? We need to sit down and discuss how we're going to be doing this in the future." One of the things that I have a concern on, being a city manager, is using taxpayers' facilities for members of the public to conduct a business and gain profit out of that. And so I think that's why we have our Boys and Girls Club, we have our Parks and Recreation Department that provides different sports throughout the year, and we welcome Mr. Usman as well to be a part of that, Galván, to be a part of that as well. And that was my conversation with you, sir. I mean, my conversation with you was, let's go ahead and get together, let's see how we can figure out on how we can use your service to provide that service to our members of the community, because I think you're doing a great job. But I think we need to figure out on how we're going to move forward with this. You charging a fee, and us lending you a gym to make profit out of a gym that belongs to the general public, I have a problem with that.
Well, you didn't lend it to me, I was paying a monthly fee.
Well, you see, those are the things that we need to sit down and start working on on how it's going to work. But the difference with that facility is that that week, we had elections, and we have a pact with the election office on the location.
I understand that you had the elections, and, you know, it was the last minute thing, but for future reference, I'm letting everybody here know that, in my opinion, it's not correct for you to take the Boys and Girls Club gym away from the children for voting purposes.
Well, part of us providing a service to the community is also to give them a site where they can come and vote without having to go all the way to Edinburgh. So it's just a difference.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, you have the firehouse there that you used to use, because I lived in that neighborhood for six years, and before you guys used to use a firehouse. And I had no problem with that, that was adequate, it was fun.
The thing is, Mr. Galván, my staff gave you ample time to let you know that elections were coming up, and that you were going to have a certain amount of days to prepare, so you can move your kids to another gym or another location. However, we...
Well, four days seems an ample time. You know, he's the director of the Boys and Girls Club, you're the city manager. You guys know what's going to happen a year from now, two years from now. There's no excuse for you not to tell me this information whenever I come to you, when I came to you and asked him to rent out the gym. You should have informed me right then and then, hey, in October, where you have the voting.
Let me...
We need a three-minute time limit?
I know, but, and I think you're right, we should have the elections somewhere else, because the gym belongs to the kids. And that's going to happen. We're going to stop having elections, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to stop having elections at the gyms. And whoever runs the elections needs to go find another building. But that's not an issue, you know? If you want to use our gym, you need to get together with the man that runs the Boys and Girls Club, or the city manager, find out how much you need to pay, so you can be comfortable, so we can stick within the law. And make sure that it needs to be feasible for you, because...
What upset me is that he offered the volleyball coach that opportunity, but he didn't offer it to me.
I understand.
And I informed him that I also was going to volunteer and get some teams.
The volleyball man, the volleyball coach is going to find out that if he wants to use our gym, he needs to go ahead and pay a fee. You know? If it's going to come to that, that's what we're going to do. And I'm sorry that this is happening to you, but, and I also appreciate you helping those kids, besides your son, and make time to take care of them, but...
What I also want to share with you, Beto, is that, you know, through physical activity, I was able to get to where I'm at. You see, through basketball, I got a scholarship to go to the university. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to go to the university.
I agree.
I graduated as an electrical engineer, I started working for Lockheed Martin Missile Program, I worked alongside the full-on forces. I was not there as a physical veteran, but I consider myself a veteran, because my brains and my intelligence was used to win the war, the war of Iraq. I was there beside the armed forces, I was there to support them, I was there to teach them, I was there to train them on how to use the technology, how to use the missiles, how to program the Patriot missile. So I believe in my rights, and that's why I'm here. I'm going to fight for my rights as long as I have to. And I'm here to give you guys an opportunity to do the right thing, because I'm informing you, if I'm not satisfied with your decision, I am going to have to seek legal matters, and then we're going to have to go to court in your city attorney over here, April Flores, and I'm going to get to know each other really good.
But we're going to take care of it, it's going to be done the right way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to address the council, not having anything to do with our Okay, so, we go on to item 1.1.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a tract of land consisting of 21.59 gross acres, more or less, out of Antiformine, a part of lots 6 and 7, and the east, 2.0 acres of lot 6 re-subdivision. The property is zoned AOI, and the request is to rezonate to R1. South Texas Infrastructure Group is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 25th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Stewart Road in Trinity. What we have here, Mayor, is a lot that's sandwiched in between various uses. As you can see, to the north, you have San Jacinto, which is zone C3. To the west, you have Malmacion, which is 20,000 square foot R1A lots. To the east, you have San Jose Cemetery, and two proposed subdivisions that are zoned R1. And to the south, you have a 40-acre state property that's still zoned AOI. And the applicant is requesting that we rezonate this property to R1. He is proposing a gated and private subdivision consisting of lots of 8,000 square feet. So being that it is going to be gated, we don't feel that rezoning R1 will have a detrimental effect to the surrounding communities. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we ask that we go ahead and accept the recommendation.
I move for approval, as presented.
Second.
And also approve ordinance 4571. Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Go on to item B.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at El Tisoncito Los Creadores del Taco al Pastor. The address is 201 South Sherry Road, Suite 100, being lot 6 of Block A, Sherry Taylor Expressway Commercial Subdivision. The property is zoned C4, and the applicant is Grupo Nusca LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 25th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of US Expressway 83 and Sherry Road. The new taqueria will be located where Russo's New York Pizzeria once operated. A COP for sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages was approved for Russo's pizza back on March 20th of 2014. The applicant is proposing a bar component within the restaurant, and Section 1.563A of the zoning code states that a bar must be at least 300 feet from the nearest residence, church, school, or publicly owned property. There are no such uses within 300 feet. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. A total of 30 people will man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. What we have here, Mayor, is a taqueria that originated in Mexico City. They expanded throughout Mexico City, and then they opened one up in Guadalajara, and they're choosing Mission, Texas, to open up their first taqueria in the United States. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval for two years from the issuance of their TABC permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody from the audience? If not, we go ahead and ask that we accept the recommendations of both. So move, Mayor. Planning and zoning and staff recommendations.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve? Order 4572, and of course, the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Incredible. The address is 2140 East Business Highway 83, being lots 1 and 2, Great...
The address is 2140 East Business Highway 83, being lots 1 and 2, Grapefruit Bowl Incorporated Subdivision. The property is owned C4, and Spare Time Concessions LLC in care of Felipe Cabazos is the owner. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 25, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning or this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately 400 feet east of Raglin Road on the south side of Business Highway 83. And Incredibles has been in operation for a little bit over a year now, and they're requesting that their CUP for the sale of alcohol is renewed at this time. It expires November 22 of 2017. This used to be the old Valley Bowl, which also had Fanatics. What you see here, these pictures, are the area that used to be Fanatics, which used to be a pool hall and bar, has been converted into a game room area that has lots of tables for children, have their birthday parties and so forth. And the hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 9 a.m. to 12 a.m., and Friday through Saturday from 9 a.m. to 1 a.m. There's about 20 people manning the bowling alley, and parking and landscaping are meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit request. Staff is also recommending approval, subject to a waiver, the 300-foot separation requirement from the residential neighborhood that is to the south, and that the CUP be approved for a period of two years, at which time they'll have to renew their TABC license and CUP. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4573, and of course, the conditional use permit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Marisco's La Chivas. The seafood restaurant is located at 600 North Sherry Road, Suite D, Lot 1, Esdras Vega Subdivision. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Samantha Sarayusman. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 14, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The site is located at the northeast corner of Sherry Road and 6th Street, within Lot 1 of Esdras Vega Subdivision. The applicant has been operating with the CUP at this location since 2015. The hours of operation for the seafood restaurant are Monday through Sunday from 6 a.m. to 12 a.m. There are a total of six employees manning the operation, and parking and landscaping are meeting code. The request is also compliant with Section 6-4, which requires that no alcoholic beverages be sold within 300 feet of a church, or a public or private school, or a public hospital. There are no such uses within 300 feet. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time their TABC license will expire, and as will their CUP. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to approve ordinance 4574.
So move, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
Conditional use permit. Do you have a motion and a second? We approve the recommendation. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
We go on to our disposition of minutes. We have the city council meeting that we had on October 20, 23, 17. Although, we do need to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the disposition of minutes.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, motion carries. Item 3.1 is the acknowledgement and receipt of minutes that we have for the meeting of the Traffic Safety Committee. It was a special meeting on September 20 of 2017. We do need a motion to acknowledge those minutes.
I move to approve the acknowledged receipt of the minutes.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Would you go on to 4.1? Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor Council. Good afternoon. Item 4.1, approval of resolution. It would be 1531, distributing 130 authorized votes for the election of appraisal district board of directors for 2018-19. Mr. Marori Gennis was nominated by the council to be placed on the ballot for board of director. Mayor Salinas is recommending the distribution of the 130 authorized votes for Mr. Gennis for council consideration. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, do anybody have any other body that you might want to vote for? We already come to the votes. I think Mr. Gennis, with our vote, will be able to stay in his position, so. Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 4.2, authorization to submit payment. Oh, sorry about that. Address the lease of employee uniforms with cintas via US Communities Contract 12 JOH011C. Contract is for fiscal year 2017-2020. For the parks and recreation, public works, utility and golf courts departments, uniforms replacement and wash service will be provided under contract. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation.
I'll move, Mayor. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
I have a real quick question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is a multi-year contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this for three years?
Yes.
Okay.
It's under the co-op, cooperative contract.
Okay. I'm just waiting to be sure. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
4.3, Ms. Feller.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.3 is authorization to surplus a truck, a 2007 Ford Ranger used by planning that was involved in a collision. The vehicle was declared a total loss by our insurance adjusters, and we need to declare the item surplus to transfer ownership to the insurance carrier, which is TML. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? To go ahead and authorize a truck for surplus? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.4, Milvila.
Item 4.4 is authorization to submit payment to Texas Facilities Commission for the purchase of equipment through the federal surplus property program. Texas Facilities Commission is a state agency that maintains property for the federal surplus program. Four departments are requesting to submit payment for $17,284 for the purchase of equipment. Equipment includes computer monitors, two storage containers, a sport utility vehicle, a forklift, small tools, and minor equipment. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, to... Who's going to pay the payment?
We are $17,284.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve the.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.5.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. 4.5, we're asking authorization, authorized environmental services, Inc., for professional services to prepare a general operating permit and TCQ new source review air quality permit application for the air curtain incinerator that we are trying to implement for our sanitation department. The city omission is currently working on the permit with the, seeking for our sanitation department, and staff is seeking authorization for city manager to execute all necessary documents and payments under this agreement. Depending on the requirements from TCQ, what would be the estimated cost? The original proposal was for $9,000, and depending on any additional requirements, it, we're asking for authorization to submit the permit.
Yeah, up to, up to $9,000?
No, $9,000 was the original proposal, but depending on the requirements from TCQ, whether they require additional modeling, sampling, and so forth, it could exceed that amount.
How much?
We're looking at no more than $15,000 total.
Because your budget is $9,000?
Yes, correct. Yes.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and second, to go ahead and authorize the source environmental science. How much are we talking about?
Up to $15,000, Mayor.
Up to $15,000, Mayor.
Up to $15,000. We do have a motion and a second. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor of City Council, item 4.6 is authorization to adopt an ordinance prohibiting left turns from the 2700 block of North Holland Avenue onto the south entrance exit drive of North Mission Idea Public School between the hours of 7 a.m. to 9 a.m. and 3 p.m. to 5 p.m. on the days that the school is in session. Our department received concerns regarding vehicular traffic trying to turn left onto the south entrance exit drive to North Mission Idea Public School from Holland Avenue, causing traffic congestion as traffic is trying to go south towards 495. Residents from the neighborhood across the roadway from the school are also unable to enter Holland Avenue from their dedicated streets based on the congestion being created. The Traffic Safety Committee met on Tuesday, October 31, 2017, and recommended the approval of this ordinance. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do you have a motion to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor.
Ordinance 4575?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Do you have a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Good job, chief.
4.7?
Item 4.7, Mayor City Council's authorization to accept the FY 2017 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant from the Office of Justice Program Bureau of Justice Assistance. The grant is for the amount of $14,392.91, with a cash match of $14,392.91, for a total of $28,785.82. A total of 35 bulletproof vests will be purchased. The cash match will be paid through our federal drug forfeiture account. Staff and city manager recommend approval of the grant.
Do you need a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.8?
4.8, Mayor City Council's approval for the implementation of speed humps from the 300 block to the 700 block of Las Brisas Drive in accordance with the City of Mission Court of Ordinances, Division 5, Speed Humps, Section 110, 351 to Section 110, 354. Concerns have been received of vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed making it unsafe for the residents on this particular blocks. A petition was signed by the residents of the neighborhood requesting the speed humps. On October 31, 2017, the Traffic Safety Committee met and recommended the installation of said speed humps. The police chief, fire chief, and public works director recommend approval. City manager also recommends approval.
Do you need a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I have a question real quick.
Go ahead.
Chief, I know that there was one of the residents that didn't want the speed hump, like, right in the middle of the driveway. Did we correct that and have it, like, towards the side?
The, I know that our city engineer is the one that put, paced them up there. What we did, we put them between the homes. That's, that's how it was done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There's two, ma'am.
Two, ma'am. I guess according to the ordinance, there's really only, based on the length of the roadway, it's only one, but we decided to do two, because it's still a pretty long stretch between Mayberry and Francisco Street. I believe they went 400 and, was it?
450 feet.
450 feet from each roadway in, and that's where they were placed. And they were placed right between the houses, so it wouldn't affect the front, parking in front of the home, or a driveway of the home, or a mailbox.
Okay.
Or any fire hydrant.
Fire hydrants, yes.
You know, just a comment. I know that school buses drive through there all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Throughout the day, morning and afternoon.
Yes.
There, there's no dropping off and picking up of the kids by those buses.
Right.
So I'm wondering if there's any way that we can ask the school district not to use that as a, as a, you know, way to get from A to B?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they're all coming from either.
Men's or veterans' high schools.
They can use, they can all go back to Two Mile Line and then use the main road, Mayberry or Conway.
I will make contact with the transportation director, Mr. Latma, and see what I can do to make sure that that happens.
Okay, I think that would help.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Item 4.9 is authorization to purchase via buyboard from Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, Inc., for library material. We would like to purchase $20,000 worth of library material from Barnes &amp; Noble. They are under a buyboard contract number 531-17. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 410?
4.10 is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract from Baker &amp; Taylor for library material. We would also like to purchase $20,000 worth of material from Baker &amp; Taylor. They are on a state co-op contract, 715-M2. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 411?
Yes. 4.11 is authorization to purchase via a State of Texas DIR contract from Verizon for mobile broadband. We would like to continue their services for the 100 hotspots from Verizon through the rest of the year. Price is $37.99 per device. Total for the rest of the 10 months would be $37,990. The devices will be checked out to our residents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 412?
Mayor Council, good afternoon. Item 4.12 is to authorize the City of Mission to enter into a financial agreement with RBC Capital Markets. The agreement, Mayor, is for the 36 months and may be terminated by either party with 30-day notice. The agreement also has an automatic two-to-a-month renewals after the 36 months. Also, RBC Capital Markets have been the city's financial advisers for the past 13 years. We do have Dusty Trailer here in the crowd representing the company as well. We're seeking authorization.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, motion carries. Item 413?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.[1697.26]
Item one thirteen, four thirteen, authorization to purchase a twenty K W diesel engine generator from Watchacar Pierce Industries, Inc. via buy board contract five oh one dash fifteen for the Mission Fire Department. To purchase a Generac twenty K W diesel engine generator to replace a unrepairable generator at Huddish Rollage Seniors Station where four, a total cost of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Item number four, uh, four point fourteen, requesting authorization for the City of Mission to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Texas Medical Task Force for Emergency Medical Service Emergency Response Personnel. This agreement will be used for potential or actual disaster that could occur in our area. The City of Mission and the Department of State Health Services through the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council will work together to maintain their agreement. The funding will be compensated by the state upon activation and deployment. Staff and the city manager recommend approval. This matter before you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the funding compensation by the state, it's a hundred percent reimbursement or, or is it a percentage?
It's a percentage.
Twenty-five, twenty-five?
It is percentage. It's under the, the contract. Uh, the one of the major changes was that the, the salary based on the personnel deployed was a set salary. Now it depends on the rate of pay for per firefighter that goes out.
Okay.
We do need a motion, go ahead.
So move, Mayor. Second.
Authorize? Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four fourteen? Robert?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Come before you seeking authorization to execute payment to Real Valley Switching Company to replace a sixty-three footer railroad crossing at Miller Street.
Mm-hmm.
Real Valley Switching Company will do the construction for this project to include labor and materials. Uh, the total estimated cost for this project is of forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, staff and city manager recommend approval for this item.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve.
So move, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the estimate cost of forty-nine thousand four hundred. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four sixteen?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor of City Council members, item four point sixteen is the authorization to award bids for the installation of a mechanical bar screen and a, and two ten-inch-influent main lift station pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the City of Mission has received an open four bid responses. We're recommending awarding to R G V Industrial Machine Shop and Pump LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. The estimated cost for this project is of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Staff, city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to.
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The estimate cost is twenty-three thousand five hundred. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We do have four seventeen. Robert?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor of City Council members, item four point seventeen is the approval of change order number one for the fourteen-five million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant expansion project. Change order number one entails additional construction costs related to upgrade, for the upgrade of constructional materials, additional work, facility improvements, repairs, and additional facilities to include additional forty-five days in the contract. Change order number one will increase construction cost by two hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and ten dollars, increasing the original bid amount of fourteen million eight hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars to fifty million eighty thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, change order number, uh, number one is under the twenty-five percent limit at one point sixty-one percent from the original contract cost set by the Texas Government Code. Staff recommendation is approval of change order number one with RP contractors.
Why is it some, such a big change order?
A change order, we have, we have eight different items, Mayor, on page one sixty-seven. Uh, one of the major costs for this, uh, change order, or the, one of the major costs for this change order is the City of Mission does not have adequate facilities to process and dispose the tractor truck waste when we go out there and, and suction away from lift stations, manholes. And the current operations consist of a pit located at the pre-treatment plant operations in this manner cannot be sustained. Melton and Hunt has prepared and designed two basins, beds, facilities, plants to address this matter. Uh, this change order request item is for the construction of these facilities. So one of the major items, which, which is that one, it's, uh, is of a hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. And, uh, and we have the items, I can go through all the items if you would like, but there's eight, eight items, but, but the major, major item is, is the addition of those two, um, basins, uh, facilities for a tractor truck.
Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir.
Why was these items not addressed in the original specs?
They were, they were not, they were not part of the original, or, original specs.
I understand, but why were they not addressed? Why, why the change order?
It was, it was not foreseen, uh, the design plans, I'm sorry, the design plans were, were designed, the planning stage was about probably four, five years ago when we started the design process. Through that time, things had been decaying, gates had been decaying, and some of the, some of our facilities also have been decaying during that time. So it's a, it's a four-year process, uh, from the design state to the construction of the plant. So that's, so, so some of those things were unforeseen.
Our engineer did not forecast that? Our engineer did not forecast that?
No.
The four-year design?
No. On this, on this facilities.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do they motion to go ahead and do approve the first change order?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, notice that it's less than twenty-five percent, so it's kind of.
It's at one point sixty-one percent.
Yes. Four point eighteen?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor of City Council members, item four point eighteen is the authorization to purchase equipment via state-approved contract for the Public Works Department. Uh, for the street departments, we're purchasing an asphalt box, uh, fucking four-ton recycler at a cost of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. For the drainage department, we're, uh, purchasing a twenty-eighteen-pitter-built dump truck at a cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars with sixty-seven cents. For the wastewater treatment plant, we're purchasing a John Deere four-ten-L baghoe loader at a cost of a hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars with seventy cents. And for the water treatment plant, we're purchasing a Triblet crew cab at a cost of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, the overall cost for all these purchases is of two hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars with thirty-seven cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this item.
Was this budgeted in your budget?
Yes.
Your budget, we're not financing anything?
No, 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 this is all part of the budget.
Very good. So we need a motion to approve the purchase.
So move, Mayor. Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four nineteen?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor of City Council members, item four point nineteen is the approval to purchase equipment for industrial pretreatment plant from a sole-source vendor. Uh, the Public Works Department, uh, seeking to purchase a model A forty dash C F G Equijet aerator, complete with a four horsepower Equijet aerating motor with popular model nine forty-C from an aerator solutions, a sole-source vendor. This purchase is to replace a non-functioning aerator at the pretreatment plant, which was originally installed in two thousand and five. The estimated cost for this, uh, equipment is of seventeen thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Staff, city manager recommend approval.
The estimated cost is what, seventeen thousand?
Seventeen thousand nine hundred and one dollars.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the purchase equipment for the industrial pretreatment plant.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Um, this is also in your budget?
Yes, sir. It was part of the budget, original budget.
You're gonna, you're gonna eat our budget up pretty soon. Four twenty?
And it's just November.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor of City Council members, item four point twenty is the authorization to award bid for liquid aluminum sulfate for the north and south water treatment plant. The City of Mission has accepted an open five bid responses for a liquid aluminum sulfate chemical. Staff recommends awarding to Camptrick Chemicals U S, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Uh, staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have, need a motion to go ahead and authorize and award the bid.
I may have to approve.
We need a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four twenty-one?
Yes, sir. Mayor of City Council members, item four point twenty-one is the authorization to award bid for copper sulfate for the north and south water treatment plant. Again, the City of Mission has accepted an open five bid responses for copper sulfate. Uh, staff recommends awarding to Shannon Chemical Corporation, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Uh, the estimated cost for this chemical throughout the year is of two hundred thousand dollars. Staff, city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion to go ahead and authorize to award the bid.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Um, four twenty-two, Robert?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor of City Council members, item four point twenty-two is the authorization to solicit bids for electrical repair and maintenance services for water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plant, and water distribution divisions. And, uh, the electrical repair and maintenance services entails the objective to obtain services of contractors with master license electricians with knowledge in sanitary sewer plants, electrical components, lift station, uh, control panels, and water treatment plants, electrical components. The performance of electrical repair and maintenance will be done on a, on a mass-needed basis for one year with two one-year renewal options. Again, the current contract expires, uh, this month, November two thousand and seventeen. Staff recommendation is to solicit for bids.
We need a motion to go ahead and authorize to solicit in the bids.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
I, I had a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just need to know who the vendor, who?
The current one?
They're gonna solicit.
We're gonna solicit?
We're gonna solicit to.
Oh, you just. We don't know who the vendors.
We'll bring back the item once we receive, uh, bids for this, for this.
Will you have time?
Yes, yes, we.
Contract ends at the end of the month?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna extend, uh, thirty days with existing contractor.
Oh, okay.
For December, so the contract will actually begin, uh, January first.
Mr. Garza, you're next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas.
There's no money left, I wish, so you could as well just go ahead and, don't ask for anything.
Don't ask for any money.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item four point twenty-three, approval of work authorization number thirty-one with L N G Engineering for the traffic study at Tom Landry. Currently, there are four intersections on Tom Landry, which are Saint Marie, Miller Avenue, Doherty Avenue, and Business City Three at Miller Avenue, which have three-way stop signs. The study and the field implementation services will reduce the travel time within this area by improving the overall traffic flow and enhancing, enhancing safety. An estimated cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars with, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars with forty-eight cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and approve the authorization number thirty-one with L N G? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four twenty-four? Mr. Meaton?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Have before you item number four point two-four, which is authorization to solicit bids for pile-on sign for Parks Office located at four, uh, seven twenty-one North Brown Road. Replacement costs not to exceed forty thousand dollars will include the concrete footing, the pole, LED, full-color, double-sided, video-ready message center. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
So move, Mayor.
We do have a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't that be part of an insurance claim or no?
Uh, we received a check just this past week for eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand ninety-four dollars and seventy cents.
So that's gonna go towards?
Yes, it'll go towards purchase.
It's gonna be better and nicer than the first time?
Oh, it's gonna be nice. It's, it's, uh, full color, LED.
Okay.
Uh, we received, during the, the process of looking for appraisal for the loss of the sign, I looked at various signs that we just need to sit down and study them, but they're pricing from twenty-five thousand to thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four twenty-five, Mr. Meats?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, item four point two-five is, uh, I'm seeking authorization for the purchase of laptop computers from H A C I Government Solutions for students, instructors, and support staff for the cybersecurity class at the Center for Education and Economic Development. A total of forty-five computers will be purchased at a cost of twenty-six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and five cents via the D I R contract number D I R T S O twenty-five thirty-eight. Funds for the purchase will be paid through the Texas Work Force Commission grant that we received earlier this year. Staff and city manager recommend city approval. The E D C Board also recommended approval.
We need a motion to go ahead and authorize?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Four twenty-six? Chair?
Mayor of City Council, item four point two-six is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract all necessary police patrol unit equipment to outfit two new Chevrolet police towels under buy board contract five-two-four dash one-seven. Police lighting equipment, prisoner cages, push bumpers, gun racks, laptop mounting equipment, and radars will be purchased for the towels. The total purchase price is twenty-two thousand seven eighty-four and thirty cents. Prices will be paid to the twenty sixteen Stone Garden Grant Funds. Staff and city manager recommend approval on this item.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize the purchase? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Item four point two-seven, Mayor of City Council's authorization to accept the twenty-fifteen Stone Garden Grant supplemental award from the county without going through the office of the Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division. An additional fifty-eight thousand from the original twenty-fifteen Stone Garden Grant has been awarded. These funds will be utilized to pay patrol officers overtime to patrol the City of Mission in those areas in and around the U S-Mexican border. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Want to approve, Mayor?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Go ahead and authorize the acceptance of the grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four twenty-eight? Four twenty-eight, Mr. Corrigan?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item four point twenty-eight, we are seeking authorization to accept the Emergency Management Performance Grant for fiscal year twenty-seventeen in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars, eighty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Part of this grant is to pay for a portion of the salary of the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Our city manager recommends approval for this item.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and accept the grant?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Bella, four twenty-nine, budget amendments.
Item four twenty-nine is for the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have two amendments in the Designated Purpose Fund for a total of eighty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Twenty-eight thousand seven eighty-six is for the twenty-seventeen Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, which will be used by the Police Department for the purchase of thirty-five bulletproof vests, and fifty-eight thousand is for the twenty-fifteen Stone Garden Grant, which will be used by the Police Department for police officer overtime.
We do need a motion to approve the amendments?
So move, Mayor.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mayor. Peters? Four thirty?
Uh, yes, uh, four thirty is, is, staff is seeking authorization to enter into professional service contract with Sapatan Associates. Uh, authorization is being requested for the professional services contract with Sapatan Associates for project management of the Mission Event Center. The original agreement entered in twenty thirteen, called for construction administration of the original design, however, due to the complexity of the project, staff is recommending to retain Sapatan Associates to perform additional services to include project management. Project management entails continuing visiting the job site as necessary during the duration of the construction period until completion of the project. Sapatan Associates will work closely and is, continue working closely with the contractor to ensure the progress and the quality of the work being completed to determine that the work being performed in the matters accordance to the construction documents. The estimated fee for the project management is ninety-one thousand five hundred. The staff recommendation is the approval of the professional service contract.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and accept?
So move, Mayor. Second.